Order, Pledge of Allegiance, Visitors' Comments, Minutes, Old Business, Great Meadow Brook Farm, consideration and action on motion to reconsider vote to approve the location of a horse race track at Great Meadow Brook Farm. Further, if reconsideration is not successful, consideration and vote to call a special election on January 7, 2023 pursuant to General Law Chapter 128, A, Section 13A. Other old business, new business. Great Meadow Brook Farm, consideration and action on motion to authorize town administrator to send letter to the applicant and gaming commission regarding action taken by the board. Open space and recreation plan OSRP appointments Nicole Parker, Angelique Broussard, James Broussard, Emily Cartier, and Erin Ballard. Other new business, discussion and/or vote relative to ARPA funding, police tasers and storage container discussion, budget discussion and discussion on process, committee reports, town administrator report, signatures and approvals, selectmen roundtable and adjournment. So we do have a flag. I know most of you are on mute. Kelly's on mute also.
Yeah, everybody can unmute themselves.
Yeah, and I don't think everyone was muted. You're getting some feedback, and I think there's a few people that aren't on mute.
They're supposed to be on mute when they enter the meeting.
Okay, so if we could, the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So before we proceed through the agenda, I would just like to, as I have in meetings past, just ask for some ground rules. It's a little more challenging. We're on Zoom. We're on Zoom because, as you know, the municipal building had some water damage. We're not able to use the room. I understand that the elementary school was not available for us to use this evening. And in light of what we have before us, with time sensitivity of it, we are conducting it via Zoom. I know it's not ideal. I ask that you stay muted. I anticipate that most of you are here for what's on the agenda. I understand that. Similar to the meeting that we had relative to the first petition that was presented to the board, I have asked Kara to speak on behalf of the petition that was just submitted. And it was a bit last minute, so Kara, I appreciate your willingness to speak. I would ask, as we've asked in other public meetings, that you be respectful. Nicole is the host. She will take my direction. If you are not respectful, any of the participants that are here, we will remove you and you will not be readmitted. There is no, that's hard and fast, no tolerance on this. I understand there's a lot of emotion in what's been occurring. I appreciate that and I understand that, but I won't tolerate any disrespect against anyone, any of the members of the board of selectmen or anyone present in the meeting. Just, it's a no-go for me. So you just need to know that ahead of time. And Nicole, I'll direct you if someone needs to be removed, please. Uh huh. Kelly and Rob, is there anything that you want to say before we start going through the rest of the agenda? Any questions you have or anything I haven't covered?
No, I'm good. I think you just said what we probably are all feeling.
I'm also all set. Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is visitors' comments. So there are ninety of us here, so it's going to be a little difficult to perhaps see hands or such. Nicole, what's the best way for someone to alert you that they would like to speak or they have a comment?
For anybody that wants to comment on something that's not on the agenda, which is what the visitors' comments is for, they can raise their hand. And I can hopefully see them, as I'm letting all these people in and let you know that they're raising their hand. Right, it's for anything that's not on the agenda, so whatever you think is best. I don't have a hand raised at the moment.
All right, we'll give it a minute or two.
Did we restart recording this?
It's being livestreamed. And he records it and puts it up.
Okay, so hearing no visitors' comments, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is minutes. And we, I understand that we will be receiving minutes in the next meeting for us to review and get caught up on minutes. Under old business, letter A, Great Meadow Brook Farm, consideration and action on motion to reconsider vote to approve the location of a horse race track at Great Meadow Brook Farm. Further, if reconsideration is not successful, consideration and vote to call a special election on January 7, 2023 pursuant to General Law Chapter 128, Section 13A. At this time, I would ask Kara, on behalf of the petition that was just received, would you, thank you for being willing to speak, and the floor is yours.
Great, thank you, Julie, for reaching out this morning. And so I'll just, I'll get started. Julie, Rob, Kelly, thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of those against this proposal of land use for Great Meadow Brook Farm. While I am only one person here, I do want to say that I do speak for many town residents and represent a group by the name of Hardwick Villages for Responsible Growth. We welcome anyone who has interest in joining us in these efforts. All that aside, I then would like to first start out by saying that I am only going to state facts about this most recent petition and the town residents that I spoke to. Firstly, a handful of dedicated town residents and I hit the streets on November 11th. During that time, we had many conversations with people and what the petition was for, more information about it, and some had questions why they were even signing a petition in the first place, because they thought that the decision had already been made. One thing that really carried through in a lot of these discussions was general confusion on the topic. So specifically, I thought they voted this down. I already signed a petition. What would this bring, I already signed a petition that would bring this to a town vote. Can you explain to me what's going on? These questions were undoubtedly led to, undoubtedly led it to a longer needed, much-needed conversation. We would then answer, meaning myself and the dedicated town residents I spelled out earlier, we would then say, the board of selectmen did vote this down initially, but two of them changed their minds on November 9th, and we are now forced to canvass if we want them to A, reconsider again, or B, if they do not reconsider, it will then get sent to a special election. One of the other things that came up was, you know, you, they heard that, you know, they signed another petition that was presented, and they wanted to know why this was not bringing it to a town vote. Unfortunately, the original petition could not bring about a townwide vote on its own. And we would then continue with legal aspects and rules around explaining all of that that encompassed the previous petition, and that it did not guarantee any binding or legal action at the result of that. And to that end, that petition was supported and put on by the applicants themselves, later admitted by their counsel at the Massachusetts Gaming Commission meeting on November 14th. Now, this is a lot of things to explain and a lot of things that have happened in a long series of events that have followed this application, and the disruption that it really has brought our small town in a very short period of time. So we would then stay and talk, present the facts about the race days and the number they were promising versus the number of state, the number that the state actually mandates. We would then talk about the state-regulated agricultural preservation restricted land, and then the massive amount of earth that needs to be moved in order for this construction to happen for a level racetrack. And that modifying land like that does not actually coincide with guidelines for those restrictions. Then we talked about the traffic and how we would see a bunch of traffic leading up to race days, temporary festivals, for the temporary festival component. And then the traffic on the race days where we'd see thousands of people affecting not only us but our surrounding towns. And then, of course, discussions involving sports betting and how this proposal leads them to a sports betting license, which, by the way, is a very new venture for the state of Massachusetts and is incredibly uncharted territory. So around that, there have been a bunch of studies related to sports betting, how it's addictive and harmful, increases mental health issues, decreases graduation rates, and targets very low-income and vulnerable populations. And as a result, many asked how appropriate this was for a small town like our town, Hardwick. So in order to perpetuate not only my voice, I have gathered four quotes from a couple of folks that are in town that felt strongly about this as well. Dana Proudie, referencing an old quote, "Men in denim built this town; men in suits will destroy it." Glenn Wojcik, "We should be in the driver's seat, not them, the applicant." This small, idyllic town is not the place for a racetrack and betting parlors. The only people who will benefit from this project are the proposers. Kim Wright, "Every member of every village cares about the health, wealth, and well-being of our community. We all want to see Hardwick thrive for generations. The CEAC is not about community, rather a small group capitalizing on the natural beauty of our home and making a benefit as a detriment to it." And then finally, Alice Lowell, "My dad, Chet Goodfield, had a dream to buy the Old Mixture Farm, so much so that at age eleven he saved up eleven dollars and twenty cents to purchase his first cow. Later, he fulfilled his dream and developed his own herd of Goodfield Guernsey Dells, own herd on Goodfield Guernsey Dell Farm. His purpose for putting his farm in the hands of APR was to preserve farmland and contribute to the betterment of the community, as was his life mission, not to exploit it for the commercialized sports betting and racetrack." So these discussions, these sentiments, have not stopped since we passed in this petition a week ago. You know, we continued getting phone calls. We continued getting people asking to sign our petition in disagreement with your change voice, votes on November 9th. Each one of us, each person that we have spoken to, continue to correspond with all the people that we have run into, all the people that we've spoken to along the way. Every person that has logged into this Zoom meeting tonight has only a small slice of information about the applicant, including myself. While we all agree that the town is in every right and everyone in this town has a right to vote, I think that one of the biggest things that I ask of you as the select board is that if you choose to bring this to a town vote, I think it's imperative that you need to prioritize honest and comprehensive information so that this can be brought to a town vote and everything will be fair. I say this because when we went door-to-door, when we talked to our friends and our neighbors, there was widespread lack of clear information and a surplus of misinformation. So after collecting those four hundred and thirty-eight signatures, three hundred and thirty-five certified, it says a lot about the people opposing this proposal. Every town resident deserves the time and respect to truly evaluate the entire scope of this proposal completely before committing either way. If these proposers are as tied to Hardwick as they state and as committed as they claim, they will work with us, they will teach us, and they will wait for us. Myself and every person that supports a no vote and protests such a vote approving a location for the applicant's proposal request that the Town of Hardwick Board of Selectmen immediately rescind their approval of this location. Because as you said, Julie, not necessarily never, but not now. And as you said, Rob, we need time for legal opinions and study. And as you said, Kelly, just no. Thank you.
Thank you, Kara. So a couple of points, I think, that need to be clarified from our last meeting. I've heard many comments relative to the election and the question that was posed of Great Meadow Brook and specifically John Stephanini at the last meeting. And it is my opinion as the chair, and certainly Kelly and Rob are, certainly can voice their opinion. It's not appropriate for us to ask the proponents for Great Meadow Brook Farm if this does move to a special election to pay for the election. I personally think it muddies the waters. It adds more confusion perhaps or negative feelings surrounding the election. And so I did speak with Nicole about this earlier and believe that we should not be asking that of the applicant. I think that's not appropriate. It was a question that was raised at our last meeting, rightly so. I mean, I think it's a question, any of the board, members of the board of selectmen are free to ask any questions they want. I will not stand in the way of anyone asking a question because we're getting more information as well. I'll also stand behind and support that I allowed John to speak. I've honestly taken a lot of criticism about that, but it was a question that Rob asked and I felt Rob needed and deserved the answer. You may differ how you feel about that, and I'm sorry, but that is a position I took and that's what I stand behind. Kelly or Rob, so I guess I will say this, as been what has happened in prior meetings, I've sort of laid out all the options as I see them, and I will do the same for this meeting, and you can certainly add in any additional comments or questions or thoughts. So one, we do nothing with the vote. We have a petition to support the project or the proposal. We have a petition that's received, and Kara very nicely put the reasons why the folks who are not ready or not prepared or don't want this proposal to move forward. We have both of those in front of us, and we've heard from both sides. So our options, we can choose to do nothing and leave our vote as it stands, as it stands based on our November 9th vote. Second option, which I've given a lot of thought to and certainly would want to, I'll put it out there, I'm one of three. If the board decides to leave the vote as it is, which is essentially, it's a yes vote based on the November 9th meeting, we would then vote on a special election, and which tentatively would be held on January 7th of 2023. I would, as chair, I would make the recommendation that if that is the course that happens with the board, that we develop a seven- or nine-member committee made up of, very similar to committees that have been formed in the past, specifically, I can speak to the landfill committee because I was on that committee, with perhaps the chair of the board of health, the chair of the planning board, the chair of various committees and members at large within the community, perhaps someone on each side of the petition to sit on this committee to help evaluate the host community agreement as we're sort of moving through. The other thing I would recommend is that I hear loud and clear on both sides about information and making sure everyone has the same information. And so I would also recommend that during this time, that we hold public information sessions. We have as many of them as we need. We call in the appropriate experts we need, whether we have MDR come back, we could perhaps invite the gaming commission back, we could invite whoever we need to invite, to make sure that people have as much information as they need. And it can be whatever format, that's a format we can determine, asking questions from both sides funneled through our representatives on both sides of the petitions that have been submitted, and getting the right answers for people so that people can make an informed vote on January 7th. So I do understand either way, I believe, Alex, and just perhaps clarify for me from a process standpoint. I know these motions sort of came in late today. But regardless of, I think we need to call for a motion to reconsider. And if the, if the motion fails, then we are still with the vote that was taken on November 9th. If the motion passes, then our vote is to be reconsidered. Am I accurate in that?
That's correct, Madam Chair. So under the statute, you are required to hold the vote of reconsideration, given the submission of the petition. And if the motion is not successful, then your prior vote of approval would stand, but the special election would then go forward. Alternatively, if you reconsider and then hold a vote to overturn your approval, at that point, the approval would no longer stand, and you would have essentially reversed your prior vote.
Very confusing at best.
Agreed, Madam Chair.
So those are the two options that I sort of see. Kelly or Rob, do you have any other thoughts or questions or things you want to raise that I haven't already addressed?
No, I think that, I mean, obviously, we have to act on this. And I mean, we acted on the last petition, so it would only be comparable to act on this one. My concern about informational meetings and pulling together a committee is, while Thanksgiving is three days away and Christmas falls right after that, and it tends to be a very busy time for everybody, and a lot of people, I, you know, I could foresee a lot of people in state levels trying to get them to come in. A lot of people take time off, they're using their year-end time off. So I think that we just need to be mindful that we could run into those issues of trying to pull together additional meetings with, with folks.
Understood. Rob, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think I kind of understand the path that we have to choose between, so.
Julie?
Yes, Nicole?
I just thought, if you, you know, in the event it goes to a vote, I think that it would be prudent to put a committee together after the vote, right, to see where it goes. If we put a committee together and the vote goes nowhere, then we'll have this committee for no reason. So I think to Kelly's point of it being the holidays, the vote comes after the holiday, and then, you know, start working on a committee after the vote.
So I appreciate that. My concern is, what I've, what I've heard from both sides, whatever that there is, there is much information on both sides that, or many questions on both sides that need clarification, many clar, many questions, you know, that I think we need, if this does go to town vote, that people deserve the answer to. So Kelly, I hear loud and clear that it's during the holidays and it's going to be a tough time. I think there are a lot of ways that we can get the information out to people with maybe...
I would agree with that.
Little, little, or it doesn't necessarily have to be an in session. We can do a lot of things to get information out to people. Accurate information, information that, you know, and with regard to specific questions and such, so that perhaps it isn't a heavy lift. My thought on the committee is that, and I understand, Nicole, my thought on the committee is there's a lot of questions that I'm seeing come from the host community agreement, a lot of uncertainty surrounding that. And my thought with regard to the committee is that they can start looking at the host community agreement and coming up with questions that, I will give you a, for instance, there is some concern that there will be alternate gaming sites within the town. And so I think that there's a real concern there. There's a real concern about the level of control the gaming commission can have. And I think some of the answers to those questions are going to be needed for people to make the appropriate vote if that's the way the board chooses to go. So that's really my only thought with regard to putting the committee together, is that the committee could help put some of that information together and figure out with the board how to get that disseminated. But again, that's something we can talk about as a group and what the best way. I would say, though, that if we're going to put that committee together, it needs to be soon. It needs to be as much, you know, as soon as we possibly can so that these folks can get started and meet and at least start dissecting. Folks have done a lot of work and, you know, and a lot of research and have gone through the document and have come up with their concerns and questions. So we could certainly get on those and address those right away. The fine tuning of the agreement, you know, could, I agree with you, could occur after the vote has happened, and coming up with specifics and all of that could occur after. But I think there's a bulk of questions that have arisen as a result of that, that agreement.
That's fair. I think that it's also very important to put it out there that this is the initial draft of a host community agreement that was drawn up by the applicant. So typically, we'll go months of negotiating host community agreements like we've done with the marijuana cultivation and those different groups. So it's, although, you know, and I hope that the hundred people that are on here are really understanding that this is the initial proposal submitted by the applicant, and we have not even delved into it at all to, you know, make sure that Hardwick has the upper hand in the agreement.
Any other discussion on this, Kelly or Rob? I'm good.
I think we kind of need to get to the first step, which is whether we're going to reconsider or not. I'd make the motion, but I don't know if we have some legal wording that, I don't want to mess up the legal wording of this and have it thrown back at us somehow here, so.
So I can, I can prime on the motion. So, which has been provided to us by Alex, thank you, Alex. So I would entertain the motion to reconsider the vote taken on November 9th, 2022, to approve the location of a horse race track at the property located in the town of Hardwick known as Great Meadow Brook Farm, Tutu A Berry Road, more fully described and indeed recorded at the Worcester South District Registry of Dates at Book 66167, page 367, pursuant to General Law Chapter 128, A, Section 13A. Said approval being subject to the following conditions. Execution of a host community agreement, applicant obtains all necessary local permits and approvals, and agricultural land preservate, sorry, folks, agricultural land preservation committee determines that the project is consistent with the local APR.
I move that question, as Julie just read.
It's been moved by Rob and seconded by Kelly. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will call the rule. Rob?
No.
Kelly?
So can I just clarify, the motion is to reconsider, correct?
So the motion...
So we're voting on whether or not to reconsider?
The motion is to reconsider the vote.
Okay. Yes. Yes, Kelly, yes.
And Julie is a no. So the motion to reconsider fails and the original vote on November ninth stands. And so what happens now is um we uh need a motion to um hold a special election. So um I will read the motion for you. So I will entertain a motion to hold a special election on January seventh, twenty twenty-three pursuant to general general law, Chapter one-twenty-eight A, Section thirteen A. To vote on the question of whether to approve the location of a horse racetrack at the property located in the town of Hardwick known as Great Meadow Brook Farm, two-twenty-eight Berry Road. More fully described and indeed recorded at the Worcester South District Registry of Deeds at Book six-six-one-six-seven, page three-six-seven. Uh said approval shall be subject to the following conditions. Alex, do I need to include that in the motion?
Uh yes, I would recommend that you do, Madam Chair.
Said approval shall be subject to the following conditions. Execution of a host community agreement. Applicant atta- obtains all necessary local permits and approvals. An agricultural land preservation committee determines that the project is consistent with the local APR.
Can I just keep doing? Or you you want to make the motion and then I'll then discussion? I'm just questioning that the date is a Saturday.
Yes, the date is a Saturday.
Okay.
And the times will have to be determined too.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'll I'll wait for Selectmen Ruggles to make the motion. I was simply going to recommend times. It's obviously your call. Saturday was recommended because school will not be in session, allows for more people to come out and vote. Polls have to be open a minimum of four hours. They cannot be open any later than noon. My recommendation, but it's entirely up to you as to how you decide what the hours are. My recommendation would be noon to seven P M. Historically, we have had the polls open as early as ten A M on a municipal election. Um but I'll leave that to your decision. I'm just letting you know what we've done in the past and what my recommendation is.
Rob and Kelly, thoughts on the hour?
I
You would say noon. Noon to seven sounds seven hours.
Uh Madam Chair, I I would just recommend that you amend the in- initial motion to clarify the timing.
Okay, so what was it? What time did we decide on? Nine to noon? Eight to noon?
Noon to seven was what Ryan recommended.
Okay, I thought, so I'm a little distracted by the chat because there's a lot going on in the chat. I apologize. So he said, I thought he said no later than noon. Is that opening the polls? Okay.
Madam Chair, that's Ryan.
Yes.
Oh yes, you you, the polls cannot be opened any later than noon.
Okay.
Historically, we have had, we have had the polls open at ten A M. When we've had no races, we did open them at noon. This is a Saturday, ordinarily, a lot of people wouldn't necessarily be working. The mail-in voting, the early uh abs- excuse me, the early vo- the mail-in voting, the absentee voting rules still apply for a municipal election. So people that are not able to vote on that day are still able to do so through my office. My recommendation was to do the times from noon to seven P M.
Okay, I apologize.
That's okay. I I want to make sure I was clarifying. I mean, that I was clear, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I will reread the motion. So I'll entertain a motion to hold a special election on January seventh, twenty twenty-three pursuant to General Law Chapter one-twenty-eight A, Section thirteen A. To vote on the question of whether to approve the location of a horse racetrack at the property located in the town of Hardwick known as Great Meadow Brook Farm, two-two-eight Berry Road. More fully described and indeed recorded at the Worcester South District Registry of Deeds at Book six-six-one-six-seven, page three-six-seven. Said approval shall be subject to the following conditions. Execution of a host community agreement. Applicant obtains all necessary local permits and approvals. An agricultural land preservation committee determines that the project is consistent with the local APR. Uh the poll um hours to be from noon uh to seven P M.
I move that motion as read by Julie.
Seconded. So moved by Rob, seconded by Kelly. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Rob?
Yes.
Kelly?
Aye.
And Julie is yes. So the motion carries. So before we go any further, um I would like to say a couple of things. And I know I've said a lot of things. I would ask that people on both sides of the equation. I would ask that um I would ask our uh Great Meadow Brook proponents to um there's, there are flyers that are going around or propaganda that's going around and I would ask that you work with the committee or whoever is, whoever the Board decides is going to work on getting the information out for that propaganda and not to come from your group directly. Or or so that we can make sure that the information that's getting out is um is is really what the questions are that are being asked. That's really where you would be most helpful. Um and I don't need you to respond. I I don't um I don't want you to respond in this format, you know, in this um forum. We can certainly talk about this offline. I just want to put it out there because that seems to be what what I really would hope is that everyone has the same information. Understanding um that people in the different aspects of town have the right to have all of the information. We'll do our best to get it out to those folks um to make sure everyone has the same information. If there is anything to come out from um the town or as a result of this committee or the Board, whatever the Board decides to do, I want it to be from the folks who are working on it. Certainly, people are free to talk about or do what they need to do, but I'm just asking that we give people a fair shot to have the same information. Because it isn't an even playing field right now with all of the questions that are coming out. It isn't an even playing field and I just feel that we owe that to people in town for everyone to have the same information. Any other thoughts, Kelly or Rob, on that or what you would like to see happen through this process?
Are we going to form a committee sooner than later?
I think that would be, that would be my opinion. Um I I would say that um I'd actually like to hold a meeting coming up. And we can talk about that. I I realize this is Thanksgiving, so I certainly wouldn't want to have another meeting this week. Um but perhaps, you know, Nicole and I can work on um so
Why don't we, why don't we plan a meeting and then we can brainstorm?
Yeah, so I'd just like to say something. I ask people to be respectful in person and seeing the dialogue going back and forth in the chat between people. Please refrain from doing that because if I can sit, continue to see that happen, I will ask you still to be removed. The chat is public record. So please, we're not saying things to people, but there's things going back and forth in the chat. It's the same thing. So please, if you don't mind, refrain from doing that. Um and again, I apologize for using my mom voice, but you know, listen, folks, I don't think this is easy for any one of the three of us. Um it's not easy for me. I've been up many nights about this. I've read your hundreds of emails. I've gotten the nasty texts at Sunday night at nine o'clock or Saturday at five A M. So please have a little respect for everybody else that's on the call, including the three Board members. Would the twenty-ninth, Tuesday, the twenty-ninth work for Kelly and Rob?
I can do that.
So that, Nicole, the only item on the agenda is the formation of the committee. Um Nicole and I will work on the um members of the committee in the meantime. And the purpose of the committee is to um initially, this may may form into the review. N- Nicole and I will come up with the crafting and she will send it out to you, each of you separately for your feedback. So that we're considerate of open meeting law. But the intent on that um the intent on that night would be to actually appoint the committee. And so um Nicole and I will work on suggestions for the committee. Kelly or Rob, do you have any? So so what I mentioned is the um let's just talk about it briefly while we're here and we'll put everything together for um the Chair of the Board of Health, the Chair of the Planning Board. I would potentially recommend the Chair of Conservation. Uh someone from our group. Someone representing the Police Department. Is there anybody else that you would like to see on the committee? And certainly, at least we would have one person from each side of the petition.
I would agree with that.
So that gives us one, two, three, four, five. That gives us seven. I think if maybe we have a nine-member board, that's probably um so we've Board of Health, Planning, Conservation, Police. Should we have Highway?
I'm not sure that that's relevant. Um I think police would, could be a, you know, just public safety in general.
Okay.
Trying to run, trying to run down like other committees and and boards in my head.
Nicole, is there anybody we're missing that you think should be um?
Um not, I not off the top of my head at the moment. Um I know that I had had some ideas earlier on. But um but I I don't know. I can't think of it right now.
Um sorry, would Nicole be um a member? Plus a Select Board member? Because that would bring us up to eight.
Yeah, I think Nicole should be involved.
I definitely think so.
Someone's throwing out Finance Committee. That's not a bad idea.
I think that's a great idea.
We got Conservation. Someone just questioned.
So we have Board of Health, Planning, Conservation, a member from our Board and Nicole, a representative from the Police Department or Public Safety, whoever that is. Finance Committee?
Sounds perfect.
Someone, someone is chiming in that members should all be residents. Um I think with some of the, like the the police and obviously Nicole, um that might be difficult to have everyone be residents.
I think, I think we'll take it into consideration. I I think we'll take it into consideration, but we may not to include people um that in the the specific disciplines. Um we may not be able to meet that. So if there is anybody else, Kelly or Rob, in the meantime, between now and the twenty-ninth that you think of, could you please email Nicole and Nicole will reach out to me? And make sure that we have um, we're prepared to